7:17 PM. I apologize for the late start. I feel badly that you all had to stand around. We're going to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. There's some more seats over here and there's seats back here, too, if you don't want to stand up. Oh, my gosh. Should we do the awards first?
I'm going to do the awards.
No, no, should we skip over the right-hand side? Should we have the 16th?
I'm going to do the three awards. I'm not going to do any of the national three awards.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is approval of the board meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the April 11th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Approval for the April 25th meeting minutes. Workshop minutes, I mean. Will entertain a motion. Somebody want to make -- thank you. Who would like to second it?
Second.
Second, thank you, Melissa. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? One, thank you. Now, we're up for public comment. Is there anybody who signed up on the sign-in sheet to speak during public comment? Well, I saw -- I think I thought I saw somebody signing up.
Yeah.
Yes. I know, I'm reading the names. So Nicole Bay, please come up to the table here. Introduce yourself and you should -- make sure you speak into the mic so they can hear you on TV.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bay. I'm a resident of Wyndham. I'm also a teacher at the Charles Barrows STEM Academy. And I am here tonight to let you know about an event that's coming up at our building. On June 15th, that's a Friday, we will be having our fourth annual BioBlitz. And during our BioBlitz, we catalog all of the living organisms that are living on our grounds, from birds to insects to, you know, trees and grasses and leaves and plants and all kinds of things. The entire school K through 8 is outside and they're cataloging all of these things. We also invite parents to come in and we invite experts from the two universities that are nearby and they come and help us to catalog that as well. This year, rather than just writing down all of the organisms that we find, we're actually going to be tracking our data from the past years and seeing, are the same organisms still there? Are they staying on our property? Are we adding more? It's not a matter to count how many butterflies we see, but what type. So it's really a study of biodiversity. And I'd like to let you know about the event and welcome you all to attend if you're able.
What time is it?
It is all day. We start at like 8:30 in the morning and it goes until 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you. And I like your shirt.
Thank you.
And the next person who signed up under public comment is Moises Flores.
Moises Flores from Willimantic. I just went to a meeting in Nacho School to Mr. Dr. Garcia. Mr. Wayne's supposed to be there and he never showed up today. And I don't know what happened. This is a couple of times the meeting and he -- I was told you talk to him personally to show up and he never showed up. We need to fix this problem at Nacho School about the heater. It was very hot inside there today again. Look, somebody's going to get hurt there. One of the students going to faint or one of the teachers or something. Somebody's going -- and been like that for last year and nothing been done. Something had to be done sooner or later.
Okay.
Or somebody's going to get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you for raising your concerns. So noted. And we will follow up on that. So the next item on the agenda is a fun item. We're going to be giving out some recognitions and awards. And so I guess I'll hand it over to the superintendent to get that started.
So I'm going to need some help here. So I guess if you can help me with the award. Because this is the fun part of it tonight. So you want to have the award so you can --
Oh, you want me to go?
Yeah, you can give out the award and I will shake their hand. So I'm going to start with a little ones from Barrows that are here tonight. And Barrows always make me proud. Boys and girls, you guys make me very, very proud to be your superintendent. We're pleased to announce this evening that six students from Charles Barrows Academy, STEM Academy, are headed to Michigan. To Michigan, guys. They're going to Michigan later this month. Yes, to Michigan. To participate in the National, National, National Invention Convention. Nurt Wyndham Elementary School and Charles Barrows combined 48 students from Wyndham Public School who progressed through the regional level to compete at the State Invention Convention at the University of Connecticut on Saturday, April 28th. The 2018 National Invention Convention Expo is presented this year by United Technologies Corporation from March, May 31st to June 2nd. It will be hosted at the Henry Ford Museum in Derborn, Michigan. It is a beautiful, beautiful museum. Let me introduce to you the students that will be participating and representing Wyndham Public School. Nathan Colady, grade three from Lisbon. So let me take a little bit before you, after you give him the -- Nate? You stay right there, Nathan. Nathan invented the Go-Anywhere Cup Holder. Did you bring something to show us? A cup holder that is adjustable, movable, and can be put into multiple surfaces like a table or hugging any type of glass. Can you show it to us, Nathan? I know.
Sorry, we haven't had to you guys.
Go-anywhere cup holder.
This is wonderful.
How does it work?
You want to tell us how it works?
I don't want to miss. Just because I'm going to have you guys read this.
It has expandability.
I'm going to let you talk into the mic.
And it also has a suction cup to stick onto glass and windows in case you're in like a car or a train or airplane. And it also has a clamp to stick onto a table.
Wow.
Wow.
Go-anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. We can put it away afterwards. Let's get a picture of you with this, okay?
Hold your award, Nathan.
Thank you. Thank you, Nathan.
And next, we have Alexis Barber, grade three. And Alexis invented a defrost detector which helps you know if the food in your freezer defrosted and refroze due to a power outage.
Wow.
Very handy.
Would you like to explain that to us?
So before I show you my invention, please raise your hand if you own a freezer. Good, lots of you have freezers. Hands up, please. Now raise your hand if you have ever lost power. Again, lots of you have lost power. In October, we had, we had lost power for five days and we had to stay with family. And when we got back home, we didn't know if the food in our freezer was safe to eat. So we had to throw it all away and that was a big waste. So I invented the defrost detector. It's, you put water in it and then freeze the water so it turns into ice. And then you put a bright colored washer on it on top of the ice. And then if the ice starts to melt, the washer will sink partway or all the way.
And you just keep that in your freezer?
Yes.
And that would tell you what's happening with all your food.
Yeah.
Excellent job.
Want to get a picture taken?
We all need that.
Thank you, Alexis. Nice job. Next, we have Jalen Middletown, grade five of Wyndham. Now, Jalen invented a party pop, a tool that makes it easier to find a place to hit a pinata without having to hang it.
Whoa. You want to explain that to us?
Yes. Do you know anyone who has a winter birthday?
Yes.
Well, I do. So this made it really easy and a safe way to, it's reusable. And it's very safe because in other piñatas, you hit it and that could possibly hit someone else. And this, you just pull out the sticks and it's a very fun way. And it's like, it could trick someone. Like if you pulled out a stick, it can go out to the other person's slide and --
And they get the candy instead of you?
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Well done, Jalen. Next, we have Darian Jenkins, who's also in fifth grade of Wyndham. Darian invented a kernel catcher, a device that gets rid of any unpopped popcorn kernels, leaving only edible popcorn behind to eat. Finally, a way to eat our final favorite snack.
Okay, do you want to explain that to us?
So my name is Darian and I invented the kernel catcher. And what it does is it separates popcorn and popcorn kernels. And I'm going to show you how it works. So you have your popcorn. So you have your popcorn and you pour it in.
It smells good.
So then you shake the ball. And then eventually the kernels will fall through the holes.
Excellent idea. Simple, elegant.
Oh, my gosh, look at there's the bottom here.
Congratulations to you, Darian.
Good job, Darian. Next, we have Toby Kelson, a seventh grader of Columbia. Toby invented the Forget Me Not, which is a device to remind parents that their baby's in the car and sounds an alarm if they forget them. It can, yeah. It also can be used to track children in public spaces. Wow.
So hi, my name's Toby Kelson and I created the Forget Me Not so parents will not leave their kid in the car. And you might think that this whole thing's my invention, but it's really just this. You can stick it in your pocket. It's that small. It's very accessible. And 36 kids average every year die in hot vehicles, which is horrible. And I got the original inspiration from my family's friend who thought of putting a slap bracelet, which is this bracelet, on a steering wheel, which is a great idea. But like if you put a Bluetooth tracker on it, it's very good because you can track where your baby is. Because if you walk 30 feet away, it will alarm.
Like this.
Oh, it didn't work.
There it is. Oh, there it is.
It goes to your phone. So if you walk 30 feet away, it'll do that.
Is that your mother?
Yeah, it's my mom.
She's helping you demonstrate.
And that's why I made it.
Good job, Toby. Good job.
Patent all of these things soon.
Yes, we saw it here first. So Patrick Brennan, eighth grade of South Wyndham is also here. And Patrick invented the Backyard Puck Blaster, a movable surface against which you can hit a puck or ball while practicing and shooting and avoid hitting your house.
So my invention is a backyard puck blaster. So I came up with this idea because I used to go outside a lot and I would hit the puck against the foundation of my house, which is cement. But sometimes I would miss and hit the shingles. And then the parents would get mad. And so, like I think it was a couple of weeks later, I had practiced on ice and they use something that's smaller and made of metal and rubber. And we pass it against that and it comes back to us. So I wanted to make one that was easy to transport and for driveway. So I came up with this idea, use it in recycled materials.
And there you are using it.
Way to go, Patrick. Thank you. And lastly, we have Blake Sivetchen. And Blake is a second grader from Chaplain who received an invitation to submit a video of his invention for the kindergarten through grade two national competition. And right now, it's going to feed right up there on that screen. So if you could turn your eyes that way, we'll see, we'll see Blake. Blake's, Blake wasn't able to make it tonight, but he's here in video.
Chaplain, Connecticut.
And what did you invent?
I invented the flick. Firewood incredible candy.
And how does it work?
Um, you put, first you put one arm through one hole and the other arm in the other and you put wood on and then bring it into the house.
And what problem does it solve?
Um, it helps me bring in more firewood instead of it keeps, instead of it slipping out.
Does it do anything else?
Yes. It also protects my arms from splinters and things like that. And it helps the, when the big pieces chunks of wood falls on the ground, it helps the pieces not fall on the ground.
You can go ahead and put it down. And how did you make your flick?
First, I measured my arms to see how wide the hole should be. And then I measured the wood to see how big, well, how long it should be. And I measured the length of my arms so then it could be just right. And then I glued it.
And did you have any problems with it?
Yes. First, it was too big, so then I had to cut it. And then it was, the stuff was peeling off for me, me first, the first time I was using it. So then I, so then me, my mom helped me sew it together then.
And what was your favorite part about your invention?
Mostly my favorite part about making it was sewing it.
And is there any improvements you could make to the flick?
Yes. I could use a different fabric. I could use a different fabric than I used.
And why would, why would you use a different fabric?
Because this one has holes and some of it, some of the pieces still fall out like this.
And who would you sell the flick to?
Anybody who has a fireplace and needs help bringing firewood into the house.
And is there anything on the market like this?
No. The closest thing that I could find was a bag. And it doesn't work for me because it's too big and won't be able to hold it up.
And is there a patent pending on your flick?
No. Thank you for having me do this. Bye.
Well, Zach, if you're watching at home, congratulations.
We want to thank all the parents. We want to thank all the teachers. As you can see, we want to thank all the parents that are here tonight. We want to thank all the teachers that are here tonight. Mrs. Nicole Bay or our coach at STEM Academy. This is truly an example of innovation. They are innovators. They're problem solvers. They're great thinkers. And more than anything, as you can see, these are the example of what going to make society better and make our life much, much better. These are practical things that can apply to anywhere. But definitely, these kids are great innovators, inventors, and we will see great things happening in the future with these kids. Every invention tonight will make society or make our community better. Thank you, parents, and thank you, teachers, and thank you, Barrows.
Good luck on the 31st in Michigan.
You ready? So I'd like to recognize the Willimantic Elks Lodge. The Wyndham Public Schools recognizes that families and the community are partners in educating and supporting Wyndham children. It is with great appreciation tonight that we recognize the Willimantic Elks Lodge, represented tonight by Ms. Ann Biggins and other representatives from the Elks. The Willimantic Elks Lodge hosted a fundraiser during the romantic Willimantic Weekend in February to benefit the autism programs of the Wyndham Public Schools. As a result of that successful event, they have brought us tonight many, many boxes of aids that will be utilized in our autism classrooms throughout our district. You may have seen all the boxes on UAN. Thank you to all of you for your community partnership with us and for your thoughtfulness towards our students.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Who's the next one?
He wants to go play with the toys outside, yeah. If I sit here, I keep to play with toys.
So we have Wyndham Center. We have Wyndham Center School. I'm going to do this one. It's really a pleasure and an honor to do, to really congratulate Wyndham Center. For the second year in a row, Wyndham Public School is honored to have one of its school named a school of distinction. Tonight, we honor Wyndham Center School, represented by his principal Kathleen Goodwin and key members of the staff, as the kindergarten teachers here, first grade teachers, as the special ed, as the ELL teacher, as the coaches, as the everyone here tonight, social worker, everyone here tonight. Wyndham Center School is among 53 school, 53 school statewide who has achieved school of distinction in academic growth. And by the way, ladies and gentlemen, it's very difficult to achieve academic growth, distinction in academic growth. This means Wyndham Center is on the top 10 of school, top 10% of school in the state with the highest growth. Improving student achievement is what we aim to do in every student in the school district, every day, in every classroom. And I can tell you that Wyndham Center and Mrs. Goodwin really, really focus on that on a regular basis, on this teacher. I want to really congratulate all of you for your hard work. I personally see what you do in the classroom on a regular basis. I have taught in Ms. Condes' classroom and I can see what Ms. Condes does. But we could not be a school district improving student without your help and without your support. I can say, Madam Chair, that I, this school is very committed. Every action that they take, every behavior that they take is on behalf of students and the business of students. Congratulations to you. So in addition to being good teachers, they can sing also. They want to be in Broadway. Great job, Kathleen.
On behalf of the staff and the students who actually did all the work.
I would just like to thank the Board of Education, of course, for their support. I know how hard your job is and I want to just thank you and of course, thank Dr. Garcia for your support. And please, I know you guys have a tough job right now. I don't want to sit where you're sitting, but keep in mind that this is what happens when you put your efforts towards Wyndham schools. Thank you.
Okay, we'll just keep moving on. That's sort of a hard act to follow, all those nice awards.
Yes.
Dr. Garcia, I'll hand it over you to finish going through the reports.
So I have one more recognition. You know, after, although we were unsuccessful and passed in the budget yesterday, in the referendum, I would like to take a moment to really thank members of the board that worked very hard and supported and all the parents that advocated for, advocated for the budget. There are also a group of 20 students from Eastern who can this, this weekend volunteer from Eastern and we want to recognize them. But a special thank to Robinson Camacho, Jane and Denise Flores, Dr. Mary Galucci, Rose Reyes, Margaret Chaney, Al Karoski, Carolina Mendez, all who work on the logistics or organizing the outreach. And I also want to thank Sasha, what's Sasha's last name?
Gomez.
Gomez, who also worked in creating the Black Party last Saturday. And I want to thank Mrs. Tracy Lambert, who once again provided a sticker to all of our students this morning in the school. So we want to thank all of you.
Tuesday morning in the school.
Tuesday morning, Tuesday morning.
That's what I did wrong.
So, so, so I want to thank all of you. Just couple announcements, a reminder that the Community Expo will take place on Saturday, May the 19th, from 11 to 3. This year, it will be changed to the high school lawn in front of the high school. And our main purpose is to create awareness about Willimantic families. And so far, I think to date, we have more than 80 exhibitors that are committed to coming. So you all are invited and we appreciate if you could come. Not going over the dates, but you do have the state assessment are taking place. These are the dates. So you have ESPEC, SAT, and Next Generation Signs that are new. Not going to go over those, but those for you to, to have them and to know. Something that we're very proud of, we received this grant from Natalie May that I spoke to you about before, informed you before, is a grant based on preparing high school teachers for equity. And one of the guidelines of a grant is that teachers need to be nominated by their peers. And then they went through a rigorous interview. So the peers nominate the teachers and they go through a rigorous interview. Those for your information, these are the teachers that were selected by their peers. And there were some rigorous leadership qualities that they had to go through. Andrew Burns, Clarissa Olmos, Evan Alpine Burger, Luis Organista, Maria Flores, Nicole Berrios, Ryan Curran, Sendal Kespe, Tatiana Gomez, and Zachary Canoa. So those for your information. This is really a neat, neat project. And the other two are first reading for the policy of student discipline and the policy and mission and goals. And I think Mrs., Mrs. Ray have some comments about that.
She must have stepped out of the room.
Okay, so they, yeah, okay.
She did it during her committee report.
Yeah, okay. So I don't have, the other part is discussion, but I think you want to.
Right. So, thank you. It's always good to get that information. And we can have committee reports right now. If there's anybody who wants to report on anything from their committees, we'll start with finance.
Finance in order has not met in the last month.
Although there may be some work for us to do, depending on what numbers, what numbers we have to try to meet for our next budget iteration, so.
Just related to that, is the Board of Finance meeting next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Yes, next Wednesday. And the Chair of the Board reached out to me today, and we're going to talk sometime in the next day about, I want to hear what they're thinking and get a chance to talk to Board members about that. So, I'm sorry, my daughter's in the hospital, so I haven't, I haven't really been paying attention to working out the Board of Finance.
There was no criticism.
Okay, okay.
It only happened yesterday. If it was two weeks from now and you still didn't know what was going on, I get it.
Yes, and I know that he did, he reached out to me. I reached out to him last night as soon as the results came in. And so we'll be talking. And I do want to report that I think it's very good that there is some back and forth communication between the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance on, on this issue right now. School planning and design?
School planning and design met this month. Conversation was concerning the school planning and designs, possible assistance and liaison with the Wyndham High ad hoc, the renovation committee, which, which has been working very hard, just did a bunch of work on RFQs that had come in and went through those. Both Mrs. Lambert and I are on that committee. And we pulled it down from nine to four?
Five.
Five?
Five. Very long nights.
It was a very long night, but it went very well. It was, it was very educational. Members on the committee who were completely unfamiliar with the process, I thought, I think came up to speed pretty quickly and are beginning to understand how it goes. School planning and design, again, the conversation is, was about, you know, what our charge is, how we do things. We can't fail to recognize that the district's projects, master plan, and future design and the use of our footprint has to be a constant consideration for the committee. So we will have a bit more structure to give you in our next, our next report, but we're working hard at that.
Any questions? Okay, next we're going to hear from the Policy Committee.
Hello. So I chaired my first meeting last week, I believe it was, and we had two readings. The first one is the student discipline, which is in your packets, stated students' discipline. And on the third page, I believe it is, on the third page, right off the scope of the student discipline policy, you guys will see where the new reading is. We're implementing this as, as an alternative to expulsions. Yes. And also, we will also discuss at our next meeting, before we come back for our second reading, definition of restorative practice. And I have just a couple of, just a couple of words here. Students are held accountable. They're given the support to resolve issues, and relationships are restored, and community will be built. That's that first part. I don't know what you guys want to do about it. Do you want me to just read the second reading? Have you guys had time to read it?
It's in our packets. Yes, it's in our packets. You don't need to read it.
All right. Let me just ask you, everybody got a chance to read it? And then the second one, the second one is mission, goals, and objectives, which is in your packet. It's number 0200. And it's an, I'm sorry, an interim revision. After the committee has another opportunity to further review, there may be a subsequent revision. And number 16 is what's added to it, to foster and social, emotional. That way, it could be implemented right away. So that's it. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Ray. Maybe I misread it, but I didn't think that restorative justice was replacing expulsion.
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's an alternative to.
Well, I think, okay. I think it's probably going to be put in place, hopefully will reduce the number of expulsion.
To reduce this, to reduce discipline behaviors.
Gotcha. So I want to say that I was really happy to see that in the packet. I think that could have a really positive effect on the school. I guess, my only question is, I'm assuming if it's, so if it's in our policy, is it now going to be district-wide? Is that our plan for the next year? So then, I guess, teachers would receive training on that at the PD in August?
So, so our plan to that is that, we can't start all school at the same time. We don't have the funding, number one. We do have a grant to do this, by the way. So we're planning to start two schools, high school and middle school, next year. And then the beginning of the year, where we have those three days of PD, we are scheduling a day that will be only for high school and middle school to be training restorative practices. We're starting, we're starting the planning now, meeting with people, meeting with committees, and so they can start looking at what needs to be done. And then that training, they set aside for Middle and High School for that training.
Sounds great. And I was also happy to see adding in a little more language about the importance of understanding the social and emotional aspects, both. And I liked the language in there, too, about teachers, administrators, and students, so.
Both of them go hand in hand. And so you can't implement one, you can, but both of them implement at the same time. It's the best practice. So this summer, we're sending about eight administrators to Yale and about three, four, five, six, what, nine teachers, Janet, 10 teachers?
Nine.
Nine teachers from Middle and High School also to Yale to be trained in social and emotional. Yeah. They have a three-day training at Yale.
Thank you.
Yes, Tracy?
Since we're only implementing it at the high school and middle school initially, should we indicate that in the policy? Because if someone in elementary school or in early childhood went and looked at our policy, they would assume that it pertained to them. And if that is the Board's policy, then it, and it doesn't specifically say it doesn't apply to someone below the middle school level, that could create a, an issue, a legal issue.
I don't know. I don't think, so I think the Board, it could be a matter of regulation where we start year one, year two. I don't think we need to implement it in all school at the same time. I'm not the expert legally.
No, 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 I'm not saying we implement it in all the schools. I'm saying the policy reflect that for at least this next school year, it is only being implemented in the middle and high school. That way, if someone from Wyndham Center came and read our policy and said, oh, this pertains to me, but I don't know what, I have to follow this policy legally, because it's a policy of the Board, and it doesn't say, it doesn't pertain to the elementary or early childhood students or whatever.
So I don't know if, Janet, you can answer that, but I think in previous policy, what it said, we will start in year one, in 2018, or year, we'll start in 2012. I don't know if you can be that specific. Janet, you can help here, because you.
It can, it can be a phased-in project.
Phased-in project, right.
But shouldn't the policy reflect?
She's saying, just shouldn't it say that in writing?
It can, we can edit the policy.
Right.
And it'll be phased in.
Phased in, okay.
It's just a suggestion.
The language that's in here says the district will implement. It didn't say that it has become the practice. It says that the district will implement it. So it doesn't, if I'm reading the policy, that doesn't mean that restorative practice exists right now. It basically is a commitment to implement it.
You wish, then. I was just raising a concern.
If I may, I think, I think Tracy raises a good point, that it just, it just makes it clear what schools were implementing it in, in what years first. And that, you know, then if we implement it in other places, it can say. But it, if you went online and you read that, it might be confusing to you as to what schools it was applying to. That's all. It's a suggestion.
If I was a parent at home of an elementary student, and I went and looked up discipline, I would see this, and then I'd go to Wyndham Center, I'm just saying because they were here, and say, how come you're doing restorative justice? That's what the policy says you're doing. Therefore, it just needs to be clear that in year, in 2018, 19 school year, will they implement it at the middle and high school? Other, other buildings to follow, or something like that. We can re.
It's just adding a sentence or two.
We can re-edit it again next year at this time to add in elementary schools. Are we doing it at Barrows as well, or not?
They're starting at Middle and High School this year.
Okay. So then, I think it should be very specific on that, just middle and high school. That way, it can't say middle schoolers, because that would also include Barrows students.
So the Policy Committee will take that into note, right? Because this is the first reading. We're not taking action on it this evening.
Also, I would, I would recommend that the Policy Committee be careful about being too specific about how, but look at language such as the district will phase this policy and starting.
Starting with.
Starting with, and don't get too detailed about it.
Don't have to revise it every six months.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that allows, that allows for flexibility, but satisfies Mrs. Lambert's quite appropriate perspective that it, that it should be a little bit more specific than it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further discussion on that particular policy? Okay, yes, Murphy?
On the other policy, we did note that this is, this revision is a patch. This is a policy that is, was last adopted in 2005 on mission and goals. We've had, actually, we've had a couple of iterations of missions and goals since 2005, at least two that I know of. So this, we really need a complete rewrite of this policy to reflect our current mission, goals, and theory of action. But in the meantime, we're, we've got this revision to cover us for, while the whole thing is being rewritten.
Well, it's, I mean, to your point, one of the things that we're going to be talking about at our May workshop is the creating a theory of action, the theory of action for the Board and goals for the Board. Following up on the discussion we had with our, our Dr.
Vianova.
Vianova at the, at the last workshop that we had. One of the issues that came up is even though we have a theory of action for the district, we don't have one for the Board and goals for the Board. And so if folks get a chance before the workshop at the end of the month, they should take a look at that presentation that he gave us one more time. It was recent, it was sent to us after that workshop. And particularly, there's a slide there on the eight characteristics of, you know, high-functioning boards. And you might want to take a look at that and take a look at the, so, so we're going to be talking about all of that at the next workshop, building on your point.
Agreed.
Anything else on Policy Committee?
We meet the fourth Thursday of every month at 5:30 at Kramer, Old Kramer.
Thank you.
Until.
At what point do we switch over to the conference rooms here for our committee meetings? Sometime before August 1st, I'm presuming.
Yeah, they're still working it, right, Janet? They're still getting cheers.
Pretty soon.
We have a date of right after Memorial Day, the furniture, everything was booked up through there, so we didn't want to do people's fun. So right after Memorial Day, the furniture can be booked.
For our June meeting.
So to be, we'll be notified, I guess, when we move over. But, yeah, that has been a question that I think I've heard several people voice. Where should I be going for the meeting? So keep an eye when the agendas are posted, that you make sure you're going to the right place. Executive Committee, we were rescheduling. We were going to be meeting tomorrow evening, but we just needed a little more time to come up with the, I'm hoping, close-to-final iteration of the evaluation, the superintendent's evaluation. At the last meeting, we had a pretty lengthy discussion and, and took a completely different approach, sort of a renewed approach. We didn't throw everything out, but a renewed approach to the evaluation. And so stay tuned. I'll let everybody know when that next meeting is. And certainly don't want to keep the evaluation a secret from anybody. If you have any questions about it, and you have any input you'd like to give, you can either show up at the meeting or speak to me.
Lynn, can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
So, once you guys put together the evaluation, does it come to us and we have a vote on it?
Yes, yes. We'll be making a recommendation.
Okay.
So the next item on the agenda, it was going to be a presentation on the Commissioners Network High School Turnaround. Dr. Garcia suggested to me that maybe we postpone it because we've been here for a long time this evening. But we can certainly continue with it if folks would like. We could have it at another, you know, at one of our future meetings, or we could go through it tonight. What's the preference of folks?
How much, how much do we have for Agenda on the 23rd?
For June, yeah, we could put this on Agenda for like 23rd.
The 23rd is the workshop. So I don't really think we could do this at the workshop. We could do it at our June meeting, which is on the 13th.
That's going to be in the middle of graduations, no?
I think we change.
Right before graduation.
No, before graduation. The graduation much later this year.
How, how quickly is the Commissioners Network Turnaround Committee, Turnaround working? Is it working for next September?
They're working to come up with a plan for next September, October, yeah.
Well, then I think we need to hear about this sooner than later. Either postpone the next workshop meeting or do it tonight.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think that, I have heard from some teachers that some stuff's already been rolled out to them, and I think it's not good that they're hearing about it before the Board is. I had no idea some of the stuff I was hearing.
Well, the process, that's how the process work. The Commissioner informed the school, and so you will see where the Board comes into the process. So the Commissioner informed the school, they come and do an audit. And we did inform the Board before that, a year ago, a couple of months ago, that they're coming to the high school, they come in and do an audit. So the Board will inform.
Right.
So we could, we could, we could flip it and have the workshop session talk about the Commissioners Network. What do you guys think?
Good idea.
Okay.
The next, the committee, the workshop meeting in May.
Yes, the workshop meeting in May.
Thank you.
Okay?
Approved.
Okay. So our workshop meeting in May will not be about theory of action and setting goals for the Board. It will be about the Commissioners Network on High School Turnaround, okay?
Okay.
The Board of Ed meeting schedule, I just want to remind folks that, here's the schedule.
These are the committee meetings.
Yeah, and the committee meetings are coming around, too. Just wanted to confirm our meeting schedule for the summer. We're not really revisiting the whole thing, but we should take another look at that. I want to.
Do we need one more of the committee meetings?
There's two of us.
We only have one meeting in June. We don't have a workshop meeting in June because near the end of the month is when we have the graduations at all the different schools. So that's just really too much. So this is the schedule that we had adopted earlier in the year.
I thought we had agreed to meet in July and August. Yeah, we had agreed to meet in July and August. Mr. Collagen pushed for that.
I did.
I'm sorry.
Always do.
You brought the old one?
This was the one that we, the first reading.
Okay, the second reading, as I do recall, did have, as Tracy said, a meeting in July and August. So the reason I wanted to bring it up was, do we want to have one or two meetings in July and August? Or one meeting, one month off, and how do people want to deal with this? I'll open it up to discussion.
Again, I would, I would advocate that the business of the Board doesn't slow down because some, the schools are on, on break, and especially school planning and design. So if a member or two cannot be present, that's the nature of, of what we do. As long as we have a quorum, I think we should meet 12 months of the year. months of the year.
What if, anybody else?
My argument has always been to schedule the regular meetings. If you don't need the meeting, you can cancel one.
Yeah.
If you do need a meeting, it's easier to have a regularly scheduled meeting than have to have a special meeting. But...
I think this point is moot, because we already moved on it. We just don't have the current calendar in front of us. We're not looking to take any action on this tonight.
We should have a date for July and August somewhere.
I'm trying to look in the minutes to see if I can find something.
Well, it would be the same Wednesdays of the month that we usually meet.
I don't think we did both, we only schedule one meeting each month.
Yeah, I say one. One for July, one for August. One for July, one for August.
So it would be the regular meetings, not the workshop meetings in July and August? We don't have that in front of us right now.
Usually, usually in the summer, if you have a meeting, it's a business meeting.
It's a business, yeah.
It's meant to deal with whatever motions the board has to, has to deal with.
Yeah. So, so at this point, unless I hear some other comments, we're going to stick with what we decided on earlier in the year, despite the sheet that's been shared with us. And I'm sure you had a lot of paper to put together for this meeting, Ms. Testa, so we're not holding you to any great account for it. But...
Here, may I?
Yes.
On the November, oh crap, November 15th, 2017 minutes, I found under action items, and I went too far now. I'm sorry to take up your time. amended motion by Mr. Collagen, seconded by Mr. Sarr, that the board approved the Board of Education meeting dates for 2018, including committee meetings, the following changed. The January meeting will be held January 10th, the June meeting will be held on June 20th, and the dates, which we are going to now make, we're going to have to make it June 13th and make it a special meeting, because we originally approved June 20th.
Okay.
So we're going to have to revert to the June 13th date, because that was going to interfere with graduations. But because of our copious snow days...
Right.
We are now interfering with the new date. Can't win for trying on that one. Dates of July 11th, regular meeting and 15th workshop meeting, August 8th, regular meeting, and 22nd of August workshop meeting, added to the calendar. If anybody wants to complain, that's Mr. Collagen's fault, because I remember that.
My fault.
August, July 11th and...
July 11th and 15th, regular meeting and workshop meeting, and August 8th and 22nd, regular meeting and workshop meeting.
So I would...
So, go ahead.
August 25th is, teachers are coming back the first week of school, so that's going to be extremely difficult for us, because we haven't PD for teachers on August 25th, right?
Right. The meetings are 22nd.
Yeah. The rotation, right.
So we could make a motion this evening to just not have the workshop meetings in the summer and have the two regular business meetings in July. Or we could...
You know, but I have always been against designating meetings in advance as business or workshop. You schedule a meeting, you put a date down, and you use it for whatever you need to use it for. And in that sense, I, I can see that we probably don't want to have a meeting on that date, because it would be too inconvenient for the superintendent. But we don't have to cancel it tonight. We can wait until later to do that.
A couple more.
We've already approved it. I don't think, unless, if there's no need for it, then we just cancel it, that's all.
Okay.
But I don't think we adjust it now unless we have to.
Okay, so we'll keep, we'll keep those dates on the calendar, but let's adjust the June date then, to the 13th.
Can I, can I address the committee meeting times? Executive Committee, the second Thursday of the month at 5:00 PM. Are you keeping with that?
Yes.
Okay. The finance and audit, second and fourth Wednesdays at 6:00 PM?
Yes, usually, they usually, if we have them, they happen the hour before the regular meeting.
Right. School planning and design at 6:00 PM on the first Thursday, and then policy, fourth Thursday of the month at 4:30?
5:30.
I knew that, that's what I thought. But I was just confirming the others to make sure that nothing changed with the new leadership. So 5:30. Our papers say 4:30.
Okay, can we go back to the June meeting, though? Because that is next month and...
I make a motion to move our June 20th meeting back to June 13th to accommodate graduations.
Second.
Any discussion?
I make a motion to add to the agenda, moving our June 20th meeting to June 13th. Well, we have to do that first.
There's a revisit of the Board, Board of Education meeting schedule.
But it's not under action items, is it? I'm not on today's agenda.
Oh, discussion items, you're right. Okay.
I'm not under today's agenda. I'm on November's agenda.
Okay, so you're making a motion, okay. The motion's been made to add to the agenda, revision of the June board meeting schedule from...
Action item four.
So moved.
I moved it already.
Oh, she moved it.
I seconded it.
I'm sorry. I thought we were having a conversation.
We have to vote on that now.
Okay, so we're going to put that down there on number four.
You have to vote on it, though.
Okay. All those in favor of revision to the agenda? Any opposed? I think it was unanimous, so, okay. So action reports.
We've added it to the agenda as action item four.
We put it under action agendas, yeah, yeah. The special education idea grant, it was in our packets.
It's in our packet, yeah.
Did everybody get a chance to look at it? And so you need us to approve that?
Yeah, it's, it's approved by you.
I entertain a motion to approve that?
I second it.
No, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Do I get a sec? Thank you, Melissa. Any discussion? Seems pretty straightforward.
Does this change from last year, or are we applying for the same amount? Applying for more? More would always be good.
It's the same amount from last year. Minor change, what would you...
Minor.
Minor changes, yeah, nothing, yeah, nothing
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. The recommended approval of personnel recommendations that were in our packets, I'll take a motion. So moved by Tracy.
Second.
Seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Yes?
I'd like to voice sadness and concern at the resignation of John Brewer, the high school music teacher. Here at the high school, he connected with students and worked very hard. Had a pasta dinner a few weeks ago. He's really gotten them, he's increased the pep band, the drum line, stuff like that. And this is the third or fourth band director in six or seven years. So I'm not sure what the issue is. I know splitting in between two buildings was difficult for him. He kind of confided that in me, not confided, but discussed that with me. But in growing the music department, like we said, we would like to with our budget this year and stuff like that, maybe looking at getting a dedicated high school music teacher is something that we need to just consider as a board. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Okay, it's unanimous.[1395.66]